Welcome, everybody. Uh, gonna call this Amherst School Board meeting to order at 5:30. Uh, Chairman, Mr. Gothier will be running late, uh, so will Terry Beam, but they will both be here, I am assured. But we're gonna get, get going on our agenda. Uh, so the first order of business is public input or public comment, one of two. Uh, so if there are any members of the public, the robust public, um, who would, who would like to make any public comment, please go ahead and approach the mic. You'll have, just state your name, town of residence, and, um, you'll have three minutes. And then after we're done with everybody in person, if there's anybody online, you'll just have to raise your hand. You'll be promoted to panelist. We just ask that you turn your camera on so that we can see you. Um, and Steve, did we post the procedures in the, uh, so there'll be procedures posted in the chat in terms of, of public comment there. Just bear with me one moment as I get the three-minute timer all set and, um...
The floor is yours.
Oh, okay, great. So you can hear me, I guess? Is it working for me? Okay. I don't have that. Is that better? Wonderful. Hi. For those of you who don't know me, I'm Lindsay Harrison. I live in Amherst and I'm Vice President of the Amherst PTA. So I'm representing our group today. Um, we just wanted to share with you that we are, um, our membership voted this week to support the ASD warrant Article 12 and 13. So we have voted to fund our civic, we've also voted to, uh, fund our civic engagement budget line item for $2,000 to assist in this effort. We're working to schedule some events and initiatives to spread the word about Articles 12 and 13. And we would like to spread the word and officially invite the Amherst School Board, uh, to our events. And as we finalize the dates and times, we will share with, information with the board. But we would like to share that with you at this time. That's all I have today.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Um, is there anybody else in person who would like to make public comment? Going once, going twice. We literally have nothing else to do. Uh, is there anybody online? No hand raised, thank you. So I guess we will close public comment. We'll have another public, public comment later. Um, so we'll move on the agenda. We already had a schedule, which is fantastic. So we have the consent agenda, um, which we have, excuse me, a number of unanticipated revenues, draft minutes. Um, if there's anybody who wants to discuss anything, sorry, I have like a sunflower seed stuck in my throat, which is really great.
I'll, I'll save you there, Jason. I think that, um, I think it's all pretty straightforward in the consent agenda. So I would make a motion to accept the consent agenda as presented, Items 1 through 7.
Second, uh, any discussion?
You're...
I would like to thank all of the, uh, various, uh, groups that made, uh, the donations to, um, to AMS, to Clark Wilkins. Uh, we greatly appreciate your continued support.
Yep, just like to reiterate that, you know, no, thank you for, for all those. We get, you know, a number of, of different donations, so that's, that's fantastic. Um, so I guess I'll take a vote. All in favor of accepting the consent agenda? 3, 4, none opposed. And so we move forward with the reports. We are flying. We are four minutes in and we are 25 minutes ahead. Um, is there anything? So we have the two principals' reports. We have the facilities update. We have the treasurer's report. We have the student athlete handbook change memo, the student athlete handbook, and the nutrition services update projections. Is there anything in there that anybody would like to point out, ask questions about, or, or discuss in any detail?
Yes. Uh, yeah, so I have, um, I would like to pull Item 6, the handbook, the athlete handbook.
Tim, is there a particular item you're gonna wanna talk about? Are there multiples?
No, I just wanted to, um, to the members of the public, if you don't, um, if you don't read them, uh, the principal reports are roughly the same as the weekly newsletters that our schools put out, um, that are published, um, and distributed via email. Uh, so please make sure to look at those. There's some really good information in that. It's a great way to stay, uh, up to date on what's happening in our schools. So I just wanted to make sure that anyone listening or those in attendance know to make sure to check out those, um, those items. That's all.
Yeah, and I actually had a question about the AMS Principals Report that maybe, uh, one of you will be able to answer. If not, I know Kristen's not here, which is good. They deserve that. Not that you guys don't. Not, not that you guys don't. Um, so is it okay, Shane, with you, if we just go in order?
Yeah.
Those of them...
Totally. Yeah, that's why I gave you the number in case.
I appreciate that. So in the AMS, uh, Principals Report, my question is basically there's, um, the reporting committee or the reporting subcommittee in terms of switching the platform that is used. And I'm just wondering if that's simply just, uh, convene, not convenience is the wrong word, but just like ease of use for, for folks? Or is there some more material change to the way it's gonna be reported that that transition is, is required? And is there any additional cost associated with that transition or anything like that?
Oh, great question. Kristen will report out, uh, more. She'll be here in February coming to that one. And we have a workshop with some of the committee members tomorrow, um, so looking at best practice. So, um, based on her 18 months in and taking a look at it, and actually Bethany started a, a pilot, a Power Teacher Pro my first year here. So it's been in the works, um, trying to make sure that, uh, the practice fulfills the purpose of a grade. And we're, and we're trying to review for efficiency as well as communication. Um, and, uh, South Heagan moved to Power Teacher Pro, so there's some, you know, some connections there. But it's gonna be a comprehensive review, trying to make sure we meet the purpose of a grade and make sure we're doing the best we can to be as efficient as possible. But she'll have an extensive report out next month.
And I'll just share, um, no additional cost. Power Teacher Pro is part of Power School and, um, no additional cost to use that portion of Power School. And as Steve said, the high school is already using it.
Just a quick plug, um, next Wednesday, Kristen and I'm gonna join her as hosting a Zoom for parents and guardians, trying to do some, just some, some consumer research and trying to meet, find out what parents want and what serves their need is understanding their students' achievement and, and really doing a little bit of a, a 10-minute primer on the grades and reporting, but also really trying to be focused on meeting the community's needs. That's next Wednesday, I think. Um, 6:30 maybe on Zoom. Anybody can go.
Thank you so much. I appreciate that. Um, so I didn't hear anybody having questions or any comments about the facilities report or the treasurer's report. So the student athlete handbook, I have questions too, but you go first and maybe you will ask all my questions.
Okay, all right. So, um, I will start at the beginning. I appreciate the memo ahead of the handbook. That's helpful. Um, regarding the academic eligibility expectations, it sort of dovetails in with the grading system, uh, in a way. I'm, I'm just curious, um, I'm concerned that right now our parent community may not understand the threshold for passing and it's not spelled out in this handbook. So that gives me pause in how are we going to execute this with fidelity, right? Um, you know, is, is passing mastery? Is it a certain number of missing assignments? Um, using Power School Pro or whatever it is that they're using here, and I may have my, the name of that wrong. At South Heagan, you can kind of see the grades more in a live, um, real-time sort of fashion to help your student athlete. That's not the case right now at the middle school in all courses. So I, I'm just concerned that if we roll this out now versus maybe August at the start of the school year when some more work has been done, that we're just rolling something out that we can't, um, you know, execute. So that, that's my first question, is that academic eligibility piece? Um, the team captain paragraphs seem to be written for the high school as they make mention of varsity teams, which don't apply here. So I think that probably should go. Um, the athletic fees, I, I'm just curious if we're going to move to collecting those in my school books at any point in time. That's not necessarily a directly related to the handbook, but it's mentioned in there as athletic fees. Cause I think right now, um, that's a little tricky. Um, do you want me to keep going? I feel like I'm monopolizing. I don't, okay.
No, you're welcome to keep going unless there are comments or, uh, administration wants to address has been done so far or...
Yeah, so, so, yeah, there, this is, uh, kind of long overdue. You know, this is, uh, one of the, the handbook came out, uh, as people know, we, we kind of moved into the high school kind of overseeing, uh, Amherst Middle School Athletics in the spring of last year. And, you know, it was kind of planned to start happening, um, you know, as we got into the 23, 24 school year. And so they got a late start on the, on the handbook. And, and as they kind of assumed the responsibilities of the handbook, there are some things that are like, uh, not yet complete, not up to date. We're in transition. Uh, this board requested the handbook to be presented. Uh, I do think the handbook's a little bit early to be presented as it is very much in draft form as we're in transition. So as you see some of the, you know, the eligibility and the tracking and monitoring of academic progress, uh, there. And, uh, so, yeah, there's definitely some work to be on this. This is very, as it mentioned in the board notes, a very early phase of it. And, uh, we kind of wanted the board to maybe not feel compelled to, to approve it, but to look, give some feedback. And, uh, we've managed the 23, 24 school year to January 18th. I feel like we can get some feedback from the board and then come back in June and with a handbook that is going to be for the 24, 25 school year. Uh, and, but we're aware that there's something that need to be done and, and, and updated in this, so.
Okay, perfect. And my apologies, I must, I missed that in the, uh, board notes that this was still in draft form. So I wasn't trying to hit hard on every point. And now that I realize this is still in draft, I can certainly send those more nuanced thoughts over to you. So, yeah, thank you.
The, so Kelly's the first shot. Mike, it's a very, it's, it's an interesting place in which we have a principal, athletic director, superintendent, assistant superintendent who played high level and coached in all levels of high. So there's a lot of, it could be a lot of chefs in this kitchen. And so we have to, you know, have to make sure we're, we're, uh, have the right amount of chefs. Uh, in, in preliminary disco, what we want to do is create a, a program that is seamless, visible, but also developmentally appropriate. And discussions over the summer took place with some facets of this. It's like in the middle school, the academic requirement is typically not lack of playing, but extra help. Like, so, um, whereas it's a little bit more supportive, you're trying to develop habits and customs and expectations as they grow. Um, and so that's what we're getting, and, and part of this is Kelly's also wants to start educating about the high school program. So it's trying to serve a lot of, of constituents. Uh, it's a great, it's a great first shot. Um, but a developmentally appropriate, uh, athletic program, including, to be honest, and, and it's not now, but maybe some meaningful engagement with the community as we talked about, um, is what is a middle school experience look like in an A and B team? Um, to, I'll be completely honest, in my orientation from being a pretty, had a pretty experienced varsity coach to, um, you know, a, a college experience where we looked at, at the philosophy of sport, for a middle school student, it really is about experience. It is not about, and I know some people in Am, when I talk like this, some people, you know, that winning Tri-County, like, I'll be honest with you, the athletic directors last year, the most important thing was winning Tri-County. And that's not developmentally appropriate for middle school. Middle school is, is about, uh, experiencing and, and, and experimenting and, um, feeling good about your experience. But when you get to high school varsity, it's a meritocracy, by the way, and there's a transition. I like approaching equal to meaningful to meritocracy upon the continuum. But I also understand that everything we do reflects the values of this community. And I had, I had some discussions with beginning coaches in the winter, uh, about this philosophy. And it might be different than some Amherst parents believe, are willing to understand the research and evidence behind it. So it's a beginning of a process, but I, as my experience was varsity coach, um, and, and, and pretty competitive, middle school, absent extraordinary circumstance, one would expect to play. In junior varsity, you would play, you know, meaningful. In varsity, it is possible, the varsity team, you know, depending on the situation. So I look forward to those discussions with this board and this community about how now designing a developmentally appropriate, highly effective, highly engaging, uh, and, and great extension of the educational experience and mission of this place, um, as we, as we go. And just so, and I think we have the right people in the right places, but I do think we have some work to do about cohesion and communication. I apologize for that.
No, that's really helpful. That actually is very helpful and, and I'm happy to take that.
In some, we'll get back in touch with, you know, about the progress, cause there is some debate as we do transition, as Steve, about serious topics. And so it's not gonna be taken lightly and it's not gonna be done quickly. Um, and, and I think there's some things, as Steve mentioned, that we can do that are more age appropriate that maybe need to be looked at a little bit closer than have done in the past. So.
Yeah, I mean, I'd like to thank you for the, for the, as a, as a former student athlete. So, um, um, only at the high school level, but, um, the, the concept that you just landed on of that, um, tying it to academics, I, I think there's a lot of value at the middle school level, especially about not being as rigorous. Some of those students that are, that are struggling academically, the athletics might actually be the pathway to improving the, the academics, so is art and music, by the way. But, but right, but that, but that is, like, to me, that's part of that whole student approach. That middle, middle school is really the time to build that base. And then to your point, you ratchet that up. If, if you're a varsity athlete and wanna compete at that level, there should be pretty rigorous, I think, academic requirements that, that, that you should have to meet to remain eligible. And that's a, that's a high school question, but I, but I think that's the right approach. I love the language in here. So there's two things in here, um, uh, that I love to see. Um, I'm, I'm interested to see how the community reacts to that if they haven't already, would be the one around the fact that if you're also in some traveling league, uh, that, uh, you're, once you've signed up to be an Amherst athlete, if that comes first, that's, um, a bold statement and I applaud it for being in there. And the second is the adding on additional, uh, game suspension misconducts. Uh, 2 is not enough, uh, and that's what the NH, NHIAA does for, uh, coaches and athletes is a, the pretty minor two-game suspension. I actually appreciate the fact that we double them. So those are a couple of my first pass comments on this one, so.
And it's right there, like, the high school sport or the sports becoming before others is a NHIAA regulation. Tri-County is the regular, you know, the close regulatory body for middle school. But we, we just wanna make sure that we have a developmentally appropriate, um, educational connected mission of our work at all schools, but certainly in middle school. Um, I look, I truly do look forward to this getting, you know, closer to our lens as we go. But I was, I do apply, at least we got something to start with.
Yeah, no, it's great. And, and again, I apologize for missing that in the board notes. And I think the framework is really important, um, you know, because we are transitioning with the new, a new ID and she's got both schools. And, and so, yep, it's great, good stuff. Thank you.
All right, so unless I'm misunderstanding, I, I, there's nothing that we need to do in terms of reports received. We don't need to do any motions or votes unless...
Feedback, just comment.
Yep, yep. So I think that what we'll do is make sure that if you have any questions or feedback on the student athlete, the AMS Student Athlete Handbook, I would say direct those, um, what, to, to you, Tom, or should we direct them straight to administration?
Say direct them to Tom and Tom.
Yep. So we'll, we'll direct those to Tom and then Tom can filter them to administration and we'll get, get some more feedback on that. So obviously some, some great work to start. So chugging right along. Um, we'll move on to the board to review a staff nomination and retirement.
Yeah, if, uh, you had the opportunity to, to look in, in Trello, we, we do have, um, a, a nomination. And we do have a, a retirement this evening. Um, and so if we throw the card, so, um, we'll start with the retirement. Uh, we have a paraprofessional, Ann Donahue, who has committed an intent to retire, uh, the position as of June 30th, 2025. And so, uh, my recommendation is the board to prove that with regret, that we appreciate the many years of service by Ann.
I will regretfully make that motion to accept, uh, Mrs. Donahue's resignation. She was a, has been a treasure in, in our district and at Clark Wilkins, beloved.
Second. Okay. You wanna do her, you wanna finish this last one? I, I can finish it. Uh, thank you, everybody. First of all, I realize I was late tonight. A work issue came up, so I apologize for that. But we have a motion from Shannon and a second from Tim to accept the retirement request of Ann Donahue. All in favor? 2, 3, 4, and none opposed. So that one will pass. And then any insight, Mike, on the nomination you'd like to make?
Yeah, so we have a, a Point 2 occupational therapist, um, and her, her name is Carrie Mitchell. And, uh, um, so it's a one-day-a-week position, uh, and very fortunate to, to have Carrie Mitchell with her qualifications and experience joining the Clark Wilkins staff as, you know, occupational therapist and, uh, uh, looking forward to work with her. Uh, met, uh, her the other day, uh, as part of the, the hiring process. And, uh, I think we're very fortunate, as mentioned, that we were able to attract someone of this quality to come work with our, with our students and our staff at, at Clark Wilkins. So I'm taking the nomination here to prove it.
So I'm gonna take a nomination or approve the Point 2 hiring of Carrie Mitchell.
I'll make that nomination.
Shannon?
Second.
Tim with a second. Thank you. Any questions for Mike on this position? My other question, Mike, just for public record, is, is it a, a needs-based thing? Did somebody leave? I, I don't know if I missed that when you had said that.
Yeah, it is a, it's a needs-based. Uh, it's a position that, you know, with the number of students that, that we need to provide services for. And, uh, it's a position that we just haven't been able to fill for a little bit. And so we're able to fill it now.
Okay. Great, thank you. Uh, call the vote then. All in favor? 1, 2, 3, 4, none opposed. Moving right along to our individual subcommittee updates. Uh, I don't know if we need to do anything right at this moment on facility, Shannon. We can certainly talk about that, um, as we get into that piece. But any other committee updates that anybody would like to share tonight?
So, uh, we have one from the Policy Committee. This has to do with the policy of, uh, volunteers, specifically with the language around designated volunteers. Uh, so for those of you at home and for those of you in the audience that may not be familiar, uh, with that, there's a, uh, legal difference between, uh, just someone that shows up on a, go ahead.
Oh, sorry. I actually think that's, um, spelled out as a, an agenda item later.
Oh, it is. Oh, sorry.
So I don't know if we can do that now. I'm happy to do it now. I just didn't know if that mattered.
So then I'll run down the rest. Sorry, I was, I was off on the agenda. Uh, so I'll, I'll just run down the topics. So the volunteer one, which we'll discuss later along with, uh, background investigations and, uh, criminal, uh, background checks for those, uh, was discussed. Um, uh, there was, uh, some discussion around, uh, Policy JCA, which is the Change of School or Assignment, the Best Interest Language, um, around, uh, that. Um, that came up. Um, there was another run around, um, what's that other one that we did? Uh, wait, where'd my other one go? I lost my agenda. One second. Let me just bring up my last agenda. Here we go. Thanks. Uh, Policy EHAB, uh, was another one that came up. Let me pull that one up so I can walk you through that real quick. Apologize, I should have put my notes in the same place. I didn't. And now I've lost that one. Uh, oh, wait, wait, wait. Found it? Oh, I lost it again. Uh, that one will be going to the, um, uh, SAU board. Let me just pull that one up real quick. Apologize for having that up. Uh, and that one had to do with data governance. There's no big, uh, huge changes to that. It's just a, a minor update based on some changes to the statutes. Um, but that's what the, the, the general, so you know, the general gist of the conversations have been, uh, what, what really should be in policy, what doesn't need to be in policy, what has the School Board Association put out that, um, we may not need to actually bother putting into policy, uh, cause it's more appropriate being in, uh, procedures and left to the administration? Uh, has really been a theme of, uh, what we've been looking at, uh, on the policy group, uh, as we've gone through, uh, those different, um, updates that have come in. And then looking across, uh, some of the policies don't align, uh, from Amherst to Mount Vernon to, uh, South Heagan. Um, and looking at why that might be and whether or not that's okay. Because in some instances, it's probably okay that they don't, uh, match because of age appropriateness, uh, for students or things like that. So, uh, that has been the, the general, um, discussions that have been occurring.
So is that still a work in progress in that piece of it in terms of finding out why they're not aligned? And obviously I assume the next step would be any corrections that need to be made.
And then that body will say, has essentially been, been agreeing whether or not, uh, that's appropriate or whether that should be brought to the individual board. So the volunteer one specifically, we were asked to bring back here to talk with this board because of the differences between, and because of the difference between our version, the other versions that exist and the recommended policy from, uh, NHS.
Perfect.
So.
Any other subcommittee notes tonight?
Uh, yeah, so my, um, update from the PTA, um, Tom, you weren't here, but, um, Ms. Harrison, the Vice Chair of the PTA, came and, and invited us to attend, um, some upcoming events that they're hoping to, to plan and host. So we can talk a little bit more about that during the, uh, communication part of it. But that was really my update from them, which I also forwarded to you. They had sent me an email communicating that as well. Um, and that's all I have there. And the Rec Commission meets next week. I'm the liaison to that committee as well. So nothing new there.
Great, thank you. Jason, moving on for me. Okay. All right, moving along to our next item tonight. I apologize, I hid my agenda and then you go back to it. Uh, Ways and Means. So if anybody from Ways and Means is here tonight to provide the update, Pete, that would be you. I should say, I knew you were here, Pete, from Ways and Means. I didn't think you were providing the update. So I clearly can see 30 feet in front of me, even though I may not articulate it very well. And that mic is on, so when you're ready.
So I guess the only update I was gonna give was we, we did have our meeting the other night, to get one. We had so many meetings. It was Monday night, yeah, to vote on each of the warrant articles. And the, the result was that the Ways and Means Committee voted 7, 7-0 to approve all of the warrant articles. The, the main reasoning we had behind that, like, you know, starting with like the budget. We understood that the challenges, given the approved teachers raises, that, you know, that the funds for that that were needed, the medical insurance costs that, that went up tremendously. But then we looked at, you know, each of the different subcommittees, reviewed all the different budgets. Were impressed with the, the use of the, the zero-based budgeting to get the most efficient budget we can, we could get. And the thing we liked about it is that the focus is on the quality of the education. Instead, that is the most important thing. So, you know, we didn't cut to do things dangerously. We cut to be efficient, keeping taxpayers in mind, but we had to maintain the quality of the education. When it comes to the warrant article on the, the Wilkins project, we approved that one also. And again, we, we looked at the work that was done, taking the feedback from the public last year. The general feeling that everyone knows something needs to be done, but the, the previous projects were too big. So this seems to be addressing the most pressing need now, the, the Wilkins School. And so, like I said, we agreed with the idea of using the rebuild of the new school rather than trying to fix what's there now. It just seemed to be a better, much more efficient use of funds. So, you know, that was, that was what we saw as a board and like every, everyone agreed. So like, like I said, we unanimously, unanimously supported each of the warrant articles.
Anybody have any questions for Pete that he may be able to answer on behalf of Ways and Means? Or Jason, you were at the meeting, any comments?
Yeah, I was there. No, I mean, I think Pete summarized it perfectly. You know, we had, it was, Ways and Means was very thorough. They had questions. Each, uh, person reported from the different subcommittees. Um, I wanna thank Ways and Means. They spent a lot of time working through, working through this. Um, and they had robust discussion. It wasn't a short meeting. Wasn't, 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 wasn't short time, so.
A lot of questions.
Yeah, yeah. And it was, and it was good, right? So, I mean, you know, to even share a little bit, like Pete mentioned zero-based budgeting here. And Pete had some very specific questions that, that Amy was able to answer about zero-based budgeting to make sure that it actually took place. And we talked about how, um, right, principals even went through closets to, to inventory and make sure that everything was, was on, was on the up and up. So it was really a thorough and robust conversation. I just wanna really thank Ways and Means for, for their level of involvement and, and the time that they've committed, committed to this.
Again, just, I don't know if it was appropriate there, but at the meeting on Monday night, I added my personal perspective. I added my personal perspective on why I thought that project was so important to me. And what I had said then was that my daughter is my oldest. She started at Wilkins, if I remember right, in 2002. That was quite a long time ago. She's been out of college six years now. My son's been out of college five years now. They both had wonderful experiences throughout their whole education system in Amherst. They both got into great colleges and they're off on wonderful careers. I want to see that opportunity for all our kids today. They need, you know, I saw some of the same wonderful teachers that my kids had when they were in second grade and third grade are still here, but they need the facilities to be able to keep doing their job. So that was my personal perspective on it. That's not a Ways and Means Committee, but I just wanted to add that too.
Okay. Any questions, Tim, Shannon?
No, just thank you for your time. I know it's not a, it's a heavy lift, all the time that goes into it. So thank you.
Pete, do you know, I'm sorry, Pete, if I can have you sit there for one extra second. I did have a question. Have you been in communication or has Caitlin been in communication with Amy in terms of what is needed for deliberative guide and then what is needed for the voters' guide that'll be mailed out in terms of text?
We talked about that Monday. You know, we each have one of the warrant articles that we're going to respond to. We're writing up our response. We're going to get them.
See, you're a step ahead of me. Thanks for rubbing it in. Appreciate it. Thank you, Amy, for doing that and Jason for attending that meeting with them as well. And Pete, please let, you know, the rest of those folks, as you talk to them and see them, let them know that we do appreciate their efforts in doing that. I know it's a lot of meetings and a lot of work to go through and not easy to vote on things like that, but, you know, have some pretty weighty impacts on the town. All right, moving on to the Wilkins Project. We talked about this last time when we held the vote at our previous meeting to move forward with this proposal. So going ahead now, we needed to talk about what we're going to do over the next, what is it, seven and a half weeks, give or take, to promote, it's not the right word. I know we're not supposed to be promoting it, but to advocate it and inform the public on the merits of this school, the work that's gone into it, the merits of the project, why we need it, why we're proposing it now as opposed to down the road, or why we're proposing this compared to what we've proposed each of the last two years. So with that, I will, I want to share one piece first of all. We saw it in the, in the notes in the, that Mike and Amy sent over today. We do have a, maybe the first piece of this communication or part of this communication, when we want to send this out and we want to look at this, but this goes back to the bond rate. And if you've already discussed this, please stop me, but goes back to the bond rate. When we had our presentation last week, Amy said, we're not putting any figures in there during that presentation because the very next day, we were going to get the actual bond quote. So the revised estimate is 4%. Not a quote, excuse me. It's an estimate of 4%, which will reduce the overall project's overhead cost when you factor in obviously the cost of the $49 million bond plus all the interest, down to a total of about 27 millions in savings from what we proposed a year ago with the financing that we had chosen, all the way down to what it is this year with the interest rate and the financing differences. Amy, is there any context you want to provide to this before we dive into the press release and get to that piece of it? Okay. So with that, do you remember off the top of your, the number was roughly 80?
Eight, five and a half.
No, last year, when we revised it for, 87 and a half is what it was. That's what it was with the interest and what we talked about last week, based off this 5.5.
Eighty-five.
That's what it was last year. Where we were, last week.
Eighty-five. It was eighty-five.
Yeah. So that's roughly, what's that, 80? Yeah, so it's a total of 27 million in savings. It's a significant reduction from what we even saw last week down in the 70s, I believe it is now, correct? Seventy-six. So with that, Mike and Amy have crafted a press release to discuss this. Obviously, this can come from the board as well. It does have a link in there regarding the project, back to the bond hearing, the presentation that Terry and Shannon gave. Are we good with issuing this press release and what do we think timing-wise of this? Do we want this to be the first piece we come out with? Do we want it to be the next piece we come out with? Do we want to wait and start putting some other communication pieces out there first?
I can go first. So first of all, like, this is amazing and I just want to have a little, like, excited moment for, like, I think changing the way that we're looking at this with the level principle was a good first step in really addressing some of this for our taxpayers, but I am thrilled that the rates from the bond bank have gone down. And in my mind, I feel like this materially kind of changes what we were talking about last week. Like, this is, this is giant. So I'm just really happy about that. I don't know that we can talk about this singularly without looking at all the pieces that need to happen and then maybe we fit it in into that, you know, into a schedule. That's for me. I don't know how you guys feel about that.
So Shannon, you did share a communication planned thoughts.
Yeah, it's really high level, but I didn't know if it would help to have something to kind of work from.
Do you want to go over this? Do you want to touch on any high points? We can start the conversation here and then we can obviously see where that press release is going to fit into the grand scheme of things here. I think obviously getting as much information out there as soon as we can is key to this because again, we have roughly seven and a half weeks to be able to get this out there. And ideally, a lot of this work is going to be done in the next couple of weeks so that we have a better information base out there before deliberative as well. So there aren't as many questions as to what are you talking about? What is this at deliberative and more talking about maybe the merits of the project or other questions, you know, than what we've seen.
Yep.
Go Terry.
Yeah, I want to go over the overall plan, but I do feel like because it was the one piece that was missing from what we've most recently done, I feel like kicking off to say, hey, we had promised this one piece of information and having that maybe be the first thing. It's not that we can't go back to it again and write and make it part of our story and make it part of our overall narrative, but I do feel like this is something that we kind of told everybody. If anybody has been following from the public hearings and looked at those, this was a piece that we promised to get out as soon as we had it. So I would feel like time is of the essence to meet that commitment to the public and say, here is that piece of information. And then we can certainly weave it into everything else that we do and repeat it and shout from the rooftops, hey, we have done everything we can and it's down $27 million. Yay. So let's do that too. But I do feel like we already, we had already made a promise that we would share as soon as we knew.
Yeah.
So that's just my thought on that piece of it before we get into the broader schema. And I'm sorry for my tardiness. I shared, I had a family matter to deal with, but got here as quick as I could.
Being late, Terry, is unexcusable. Unbelievable profession. I'm just kidding. I was late as well, if you didn't know. Yes. So I, anybody have any overall thoughts? I don't know if everybody's had a chance to review what Shannon sent over, but Shannon, if you want to touch upon what you did send?
Sure.
And I think having a collective, a place to collect all the information, this is as good a starting point as any to be, for certain.
Yeah, definitely. I just need to pull it up. I sent it to you guys and now I need to find it. Okay. So, yeah, so the, I don't know, I don't think, do we need to project this? Yeah.
I was just gonna say, if we want to project that.
I think that would be helpful. Thanks. And then you can have that back and I'll... Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And Danae, we'll make sure that we send this to you, the draft, just because it was obviously shared amongst us. So we'll put it in the notes as we're going to be sharing it up there too. And then obviously, as we revise it, we can continue to send updates to you as well for future meetings.
Okay, great. So, yeah, just some talking points to guide us tonight. So who's our audience? Obviously, that's Amherst residents. You can advance. Yep. So in my mind, our objective is just, all we can really do is provide factual information to taxpayers regarding warrant article 12. We're not, you know, we're here to just provide the information, create awareness about the proposal. I think that's the first step. But really, for me, it's informing the community of the key points. So how does it differ from previous requests, right? Like, that's our main piece of information to get out there. What were the revisions based on the feedback, a cost-benefit analysis and impact to education? Like, in my mind, those are the four key points, but I'm certainly open. This was really just, you know, kind of my thoughts to get us started. And we want to increase voter turnout and obviously support for what we're trying to accomplish in the district. So I would be curious if anybody else has any key points that I'm not missing or if you guys are like, you're in the wrong space with this.
No, I think it's important, though, that we're, we obviously have great communication tools within the districts, so what I consider in-district parents with kids and teachers that are affiliated with the school. So I think a big focus of this, the objective, and obviously this is, it's probably a sub-point up there, but it's making sure that we're outreach to those folks who aren't in the schools, whether their kids have already gone through, they don't have kids yet, they have kids that are younger than school age. So that, that demographic, which is the largest demographic in the town, is what, 75% give or take? That's the one that we need to, you know, not prioritize, but make sure that we're outreach to as well. So whether or not that's on this slide or not, but that's just a call out that I wanted to make sure we don't forget about because we do have good communication tools for in-district involvement.
To that point, the town now does a town newsletter. In Hancock, they used to give me a page of their town newsletter to be able to put school-related stuff in it. I don't know if Amherst would be opposed to that, but we may want to reach out to the selectmen to see if they would be willing to let us put a one-pager in the next. I don't know what their timing is on that, but, and because a lot of people obviously may subscribe to that, that don't, that's exactly trying to reach that crowd.
I can reach out, I'll reach out to the selectmen to find more about that.
I think it's Selectman Prairie who organizes that, if I'm not mistaken. Select woman? I'm not sure the right, select person. Great. Okay. Do we want to move to the next slide? Great. Okay, so materials. I kind of just went with what we have and what we need. Like, this is sort of a hybrid of that. So if you'll recall, there was a joint facilities advisory committee website that had become that, a vast repository of like everything for years and years. So Tim actually did some work to archive all of that and clean it up under it. So it's now wilkins-school-project.sau39.org. So it's more focused on just this project, this, just this year's bond issue. So what I would like to ask is for all of you to just spend a few minutes with it over the next day or two, provide any feedback to myself or to Tim. And if we need to add anything or delete anything, that would be great. And then that is a really easy push out to every facet of the community that we can. And I think it should also be included on any press releases that go out moving forward once we're all thumbs up on that. You know, it's been, so it has the bond hearing slide deck on it and it has the updated photos. It has the FAQ has been updated. I think there may be one question that I'm waiting on, some feedback from Banwell and D W just to make sure we have accurate information for this period in time. So that would be my request on the website. Social media, nothing has happened there, but there is an existing social media page that was used in the past. I didn't want to touch that without talking, obviously, to the board. I think Victoria was managing a lot of that as a committee chair last year in doing that. So what I would like, what I would recommend, and again, open to feedback, is that we update that page to also now be called the Wilkins School Project, archive everything and start sending out new updates there to all the pages. I think that page has somewhere in the ballpark of 500 to 600 followers. I'm not sure. There was a printed binder at the library last year. I meant to bring it with me. I have it. Obviously, that would be a great thing to update and put there for any folks who come in. To your point, Tom, about reaching out, finding ways to connect with people who, you know, aren't, aren't in the schools and may not be online.
Ask one question on that. It's, that's a, it's a bigger lift to do that because it's a lot more physical and I say physical, not physically exhausting, but it's a lot more, you have to do a lot more touching of things to do that. And we know what kind of traffic that generated at the library.
I don't, I don't. When Victoria resigned her seat, she handed me the binder and said, you may need this.
We fingerprinted it, just touched it.
I don't, I don't. I mean, it may be worth asking the folks that work at the circulation desk, you know, if they noticed many people coming in and taking a peek at it. You're right, it is a little bit more cumbersome to create. You know, it had all of the, I mean, it's, it is and it isn't, right? Like, you print out, you print out the deck. I mean, basically, it was a printout of the decks, everything that had been presented last year is, and I apologize that I didn't bring it with me. It had the hearing presentation. It had any other presentation that had ever been done. She just printed them and put them in. I think the warrant article language was probably in there, renderings of the school. So I don't know that there's a lot of recreating the will. You print out the FAQs that are online. I'm happy to do it. It's not going to be as thick as, you know, what she had last year because there had been so many more presentations leading up to the creation of it. But I don't mind doing it and I think it's worth, I mean, even if only a couple people look at it, it's a resource that we're providing. And really, that's our job right now is just to provide resources to the community. We can't, you know, we hope they'll come and look at it, but I don't know.
I seem to recall it was a specific request.
Oh, maybe.
We were asked to do some curriculum in binders and have things that people could physically go through. I believe it was an extension of that request that we have a facet of our community that is more comfortable with something in their hands than with something online. And so even if it's a small minority, I do feel like it is one that we should accommodate if we can within a reasonable amount of effort.
Yeah. Okay. So informational flyers to post around town. I don't know. I just kind of put this here. I like the idea of sort of a fast fact. So if we're going with what are the changes from last year to this year, just a one-pager that kind of just shows that. Again, someone has to create that. But I don't, I think we have everything we need to do that. We just basically need an agreement amongst this board that that's what we want to do and then we can, you know, one of us can agree to take that on.
I think a QR code as well, that they could, they could jump to the other information very easily and not have to go type it in.
Oh, yeah, that's great. That's a great idea.
Utilizing something on Canva. I think you were able to put a QR.
You are. You are. Yeah. And I think you can even do that on Google Docs too, I'm pretty sure. Yeah. So, yeah, that's a quick, kind of a quick and easy way to accomplish that, Terry. I love that idea of, so, you know, everywhere, right? Like, anywhere you can post a town flyer. So Malden's, you know, the library, all those places. I had a question for this group about the voter guide. Is it, obviously, we could just put a link to the website. That's a quick way to do it. Can we do a one, like, add a one-page of like quick facts? Or is, like, how does that, what is our, obviously, we're not going to do a separate mailer at this point and I don't think we have the budget, the resources to do that.
So I think what we should do, and I think that a one-pager informational flyer is probably our most efficient. We get the most bang out of the buck for that because we can insert that into the voters' guide and the, probably not the deliberative guide because that's due, you know, next week. If we can get it done for that, providing that one-pager, you can have that be the one-pager. Something Ways and Means has talked about having the one quick hitter information and then you have the rest of the information behind that. So if somebody wants to read one page, they get all the facts and then they have the rest of that information available. So I think that's going to be the most bang for our buck to be able to create that and then utilize that with any other presentations that we do, whether it's at deliberative or more importantly, for printed materials, voters' guide, and then the deliberative guide as well.
So do we, I'm sorry, do we know when we need that? Did you say next week or no?
Deliberative guide, voter guide. Okay. I believe Chelsea was going to give us dates for that stuff as well, correct?
Yeah.
But, yeah, we put that together. The voter guide, that's a little bit harder to utilize on. My thought is if we had it ready at deliberative, it doesn't even need to be in. It could just be in a stack next to. People grab one of each. And then there's no reason, again, we, if we get a good, clean page with good information, nothing changes at deliberative for any kind of amounts. And then we could use it at the many things that we hope to be doing. Because I do know that we have had a lot of people in the past who like to take it and kind of press us later. And so it would be good to have, you know, a stack of them that we can use different ways.
And then are you looking to have those included as part of the voter guide as a separate page or inserted because?
I think.
You have to work with our vendor, so.
Well, I think what we'll do, what we'll do.
They nail it for us, so.
Yeah, I think what we'll do is just send over the voter guide. When we send over the voter guide information, we'll send over all pieces and all the articles like we typically do.
Yep.
And that one-pager will become part of the facilities presentation. So it'll be part of the binded thing. I know that adding an insert is going to obviously raise costs.
Insert would be hard, so.
Yeah. So it'll just be part of, if we gave you six pages on facilities, it would be a Yeah, um so it'll just be part of, if we gave you six pages on facilities, it would be a seven.
Perfect, that's great.
But that'll be the lead page for the facilities.
Got it.
Cool, great, so and we're talking that's probably the same, we think that's probably going to be the same.
To me, I think if you do it right, that's all you need is just one one page, obviously, eight and a half by eleven for anything printed, if we wanted to do something a little bigger to scale, to hang around places, we could probably do the. Eight and a half by fourteen or even eleven by seventeen, but that's just going to, you know, size wise, I think it's it's some more work to create those.
Anything we hang up, as long as we have the QR code.
Correct.
On it, people will be able to get more anyway, so.
Yes, I still feel like in addition to something with, like, it can't just be a QR code because I think the demographic we're talking about. In some instances, m- may not be as.
QR codes in the box.
Comfortable.
I'm just saying, everything we publish about this project.
Should have that, yeah.
Should have that QR, every, every press release we put out, if it's, obviously, the newspaper won't, but but.
Yeah. Great, um then I had montage boards, which Banwell's working at, I actually just got an email with a draft of those, so if you remember, that's basically just like the board that has. The exterior renderings and the floor plans all on one big poster board, um so obviously, we'll want to set those up outside of the, you know, outside in the lobby at deliberative, um as people walk in, they can take a peek and and around town. Um and then press releases to local media outlets, so um I I really liked the press release that was written about the um. The rates, I think that's great, I wondered almost though if we need. To to do, I don't know if it's a separate press release or just adding to it, kind of, I think to what you were driving at, Terry, with just. There may be people who don't know that we're doing this at all, so it's like, wait, what are you talking about, I just wonder if there needs to be a little more meat at the beginning of it, just, you know, that the board had has taken this action. Um and that this will be on the ballot, so that was my thought there that I wanted to um open up to you guys about that.
Yeah, I would second that, and um I I would also like to see it under the boards, I know, I know we don't have letterhead, but um to me, that's something that should be. Under, you know, under you as the chair or under the board as opposed to the SAU.
And I can work on, I can work on crafting something incorporating what um Mike and Amy had already put together with those facts, and we can just edit that, so we won't send that tomorrow, Mike, we'll we'll um, I can edit that as uh and then. Put something that looks a little more voluminous, if you will, without being overly lengthy.
Yeah, I don't think it has to be a lot, no, no, I think just a lead paragraph.
Agree.
Yeah, I think I think all this is good stuff, um. One question and then, well, maybe two questions, maybe no comments, um. Are we going to talk now about the types of facts that we want on the one pager, because I know one thing that's been brought up by Ways and Means and has been brought up a number of times is the comparison, right, the do nothing option, if we don't do anything, what is that going to cost us? You know, we've been asked for that number a number of times, I think it's around thirty-three million, but but you know, making sure that we have that in information. Um and there are no forgetting into that level of detail right now, but sooner rather than later would be great, and.
I I think it's good to to get into that, Jason, just to to break your train of thought there, because I think we want to get what we want on this, so that when we assign the person to craft it, they know what to include, and then we can review those drafts accordingly.
And then my other question, and I don't know if you have an answer to this, Shannon, but I I feel like when um. You know, we had all the quote unquote experts here, one thing that they talked about that they might be able to provide for us was a three D model of what it would look like, and I don't know if that, I don't know if, am I making that up?
They just mentioned a three D model at some point, but I I I wasn't sure that.
I don't think that's.
Never seen that, I think they just meant the re- the rendering on the board.
Yeah, I think they were talking about the this as a conceptual rendering.
Oh.
Yeah, and so, and what you're talking about would which would be great to have, but we won't have.
Right, because I was thinking.
Of, um like, as we, so once this gets approved and as we move forward, we'll be able to do like flybys, right, so once the project is more fully developed and, you know, really modeled out. Then at that point, we may have more of like the the walkthrough of what this space would look like, but we aren't to that level with um. Kind of what we have um contracted those folks to do. It does that make sense? Yeah, okay. So yeah, so three D being like, it's not a floor plan anymore, we now have this like conceptual drawing of what it looks like, that's what they were talking about.
So are we discussing now what that page or are we going to do that at the end?
I would say just do it now, what other information we want to get out there for it.
So I would actually, um I want us to be able to get to that quickly, but I wouldn't want that on the one page, I want the one page to be. Here is what it is right now, and maybe a comparison to last year, I think that's appropriate. And saying, here is after working with them, with you, with everything, here's where we're at. But I feel like I don't want to muddy the waters, looking like we're offering kind of the. For lack of a better way to say it, a choice of either thirty-three million or, you know, forty-nine million, I I feel like I want us to be able to readily share it, and if we're giving like. Weekly updates on this page, if we're giving continued, you know, facts like we did last time, I think that would certainly be one that is worth discussing. And it should be on that page that if they want to go dig in deeper, eh they don't have to look hard to find it, but I don't want that to be my. I only have your attention for a page, that's not the number one thing I want, I want it to be, here's where we are at, after all this many years of work, here's where we are. That's just my opinion.
So I I want to, eh can I chime in?
Yeah.
Okay, so I think we're talking about a few different things, so I'm just going to kind of break them out, so I think first we have what we're, what I think we should just for ease of doing business tonight, call a fast fact flyer, right, so that's like the one pager. And I think Terry, I agree with Terry, I think that needs to be really high level, um and what are the the main things we want you to know about this year, it's different, why is it different? Um and then where can you go for more information, I agree, we've heard over and over again, we want to hear more about comparisons, I want to, you know, people want to know about the comparison and. Square footage in our existing building versus the new building, and that's all in progress, um people want to know more about that, you know, what are we going to spend on these buildings over time, so I wonder if the best place for that. Is on the website in the FAQ, um and then as people ask, we can reference that and pull that up, and then I also believe there's a place for both of those things perhaps in the deliberative. Presentation. That's my thinking on that, um, yeah.
I would agree with you, Shannon.
Yeah, no, I just, yeah, no, 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 that's that's fine, my previous thoughts are are gone, um this is potentially an ignorant question, um but I feel like it's going to come up. And that is going to be on what information are we basing that thirty-three million, is that based on this former CNA, what, you know, how did we arrive? Because I know I feel like at one time when it was quote unquote the kick the can, I feel like the number was thirty-six million. Uh that could be, might not remembering correctly, so how how did we determine that, just because I know it's going to come up and I want to be able to articulate like, this is how. We know it's thirty-three million.
Yep, so that's a great question, so Roger and um. Matt, I'm sorry, my mind just drew a complete blank from DEW have done some work, so I'm not, I'm not quoting a number right now because I don't have it in front of me, so I'm not sure. Um what that number is off the top of my head, but they did some work very recently to go back and look at all of all of that.
So it's basically a status quo situation, if the school stayed the way they are now, what is that long term cost breakdown going to be for for all the schools, they were working on that, and I don't think Roger submitted that yet, correct, Mike?
One of the discussions we had at at Building in Grounds was renno minus addition plus replace portable. I think, and Roger did that work, I thought that was our rough formula, that because we had now had a renno, right?
Yep, no, that's definitely what we talked about.
Not to build a suit, right, the renno plan, no additions there, and replacing portables, and then actually replacing portables and adding portals. It wasn't one for one, it was replacing and basing the portables that we needed for space.
Right, because we can't keep music on the stage forever.
And we can't keep uh that office portable.
That's right.
I I think, yeah, I.
That's sound right.
That, no, that is what we discussed, and I just, I don't have, um I don't have it right at my fingertips, um because I know they did some work on that.
Well, and honestly, the original number when we first started this project way back was like a total spitball, right, an educated one, but but one that was vague. This time, we've put the work into a line by line comparison of what um just updating the systems in the existing space would be, and so taking that number was a very appropriate place to start. Saying that we weren't expanding those spaces, we were just updating them to current code, and then it was saying for programmatic needs and for. Expected enrollment, for all the other things, how would we get that square footage if it wasn't an addition, and that would be multiple portables plus knowing. That our current portables are coming to end of life, and so those were a given and then some additional. So it was a far more um, a far more informed number than our our original one was, that was going off some broader things, so I think that we. Felt comfortable with kind of the formula we put together to to get to this. So I think that eh the way you described it was exactly my understanding as well, it was an extended conversation in Building in Grounds.
And the only, the only thing that we that we didn't add, which I thought was fascinating last year, to be completely honest. Once you have those portals, you have to start saving again for the full replacement, and we didn't add that, it would mean it was like a day one cost. But unlike a building which is going to be there for thirty or forty, the portals aren't, so you really would have to. Start sa- well, you know what I mean, oh, well, not in fully.
Maybe, maybe it could be.
Sorry, but not effect.
Shouldn't, shouldn't be there.
But not effectively meet the safety in HVAC, I I apologize for that, but.
Yeah, no.
That came up last year, at one of the meetings we had when Victoria presented that, it was also starting the replacement cycle.
That's right.
Which is different than a a bricks and mortar. Some, and I just wanted to add that because I thought that was fascinating, and maybe no one else was fascinated about it, but I was fascinated by it.
Good point, and I don't know if you put it in this heard.
We didn't, we didn't talk about that cost of saving for the next iteration. But it is, and it was, I think, Terry, I think you and I agree on what the conversation. However, we got there, we are going to need that number just to make sure we can include that in deliberative and then on the website as well.
Yeah, agreed.
Okay, uh other fast facts that, uh Jason, do you have anything else that you want to bring up on that, because it is a good point, making sure we get. What we need out there, I think we have to talk about the differences between the two projects, what this highlights, what this solves. Eh I probably, what it solves, what the costs are, what the differences are from last year, and then um I think they're going to get to the end of your eight and a half by eleven fairly quickly with those.
Yeah.
And again, I think simpler is better on this, and as we share this in different publications, voters' guide, deliberative guide, we can be more um in depth with some of the subsequent pages.
Yeah, I think so, I mean, for me, like in reflection, kind of looking at at some of the things we we did as a committee over the years with this, I think in our. Attempts and efforts to be thorough and to provide all the information, it was almost information overload, so um I would like to see us be pretty um. Eh as simple as we can, with, you know, but still do the, but still do the work justice and still answer all of the questions, right, so just keeping it really um targeted, thank you, yeah, that's the word, um focused, yeah.
Yeah, um so, and I don't know if it would would fit on this page, and this might not be the appropriate place for it, but in just looking a little bit at all the work that Tim has done. On on the website, I love the fact, if you click on the healthy buildings component, where it says, uh you know, basically, that students spend more than fifteen thousand hours in a school, and. The importance, the importance of that and the importance of a healthy environment, you know, we got a lot of pushback, uh maybe that's, maybe that's mischaracterizing, but we got at least some pushback. Last year saying like, we're not focused on the educational outcome, so I I'm not sure if there's some way, if if this this might not be the place, but like.
I I think like a pullout factor or a, again, we're saying what are the benefits of, right?
Right.
Important, and I think there's no reason when we say one page, we can't be front and back. So maybe you have your most, and then you have a little bit of additional on the back or some additional pictures, so. I would be open to it not being two pages to keep track of, but front and back, I think, could be appropriate, to give us a little more to play with. Because I agree, I think that bringing out some of those, it's not just our feeling or our gut that it's going to, it's like, no, here's actual facts that speak to us saying. They spend a lot of time here, and there are actual health things, and there are real, when you say, well, buildings help performance, well, yeah, eh eh in some ways, it certainly.
And so I guess my other question in in thought is, and I don't, I don't really know about this question, to be honest with you, like. I feel like last year, we kind of, we took almost, I don't want to mischaracterize it, but a little bit of a negative tack, like, here are all the things that are wrong. I don't know if maybe we took a different tack, like, here's all the things you get if 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 we do this, right, if this one pager is more like. Hey, you approve this, here's all the things you get, you get a community gym space, you get a healthy building, you get, like, what does everybody, what are the wins for everybody as opposed to? Right, so tra- traffic flow, like, like, you know, like, what are the wins that that impact and help everybody, uh because in some of the community things that we heard. Um it was, you know, there was a sense of like, well, you're fear mongering. Um by focusing on on the negative, um so so maybe it's like, maybe this one pager is like, here is what you get, you approve this, here's all the awesome things that you get. Uh I just a, just a thought.
No, I think, I I mean, I I would a- agree with, you know, putting this in the affirmative, because that really is the reason that we're looking at this, right, obviously, we're looking at it to solve. Some very real problems, and I think that's what you all as a board last year tried to share with the community was to show those problems, which is a hard thing to do. Um so I I do think that was an important piece of the community getting to the point of understanding the need. Um but what we're really trying to do is enhance the experience for generations of students moving forward, so how do we do that, we do that with. You know, appropriate spaces, we do that with appropriate technology, we do that, you know, we have re- refined this space to to be such that it will work for a mu- a multitude of, um you know. Teaching styles that may come, you know, in the next decade, right, we all know those things change and evolve, so I would concur and agree. Um that we've already made the case for what the issues are, so that doesn't need to be the primary focus this year.
I totally agree, and I think that um, I also like the fact that you want to be the community focus. Here, it serves both the students who are in it all day, but then also an expanded community role, because I do think that schools are the heart of the community, right? I know um in Comm Bell right now, there's a lot of discussion that they're looking to shut down some elementaries, and. For the individual towns, that's a very difficult thing, because that's part of their identity, and so it really. Framing it in that community way, I think, can only help us, especially because, as you point out very rightly, Tom, the majority of people voting on this do not. Have students currently in our schools, and we know that, that's just a fact, so focusing on the community part of it, I think, is is really essential as well.
Does anybody want to take the first crack under their purview?
At a one pa- at what, a one pager?
At a one pager, yes. And and let me back up further, I think that, and maybe I'm speaking incorrectly, but I think that as we put together information for voters' guide and for deliberative guide, the items that we've. That we really presented at public hearing, maybe the items that we can train, you know, condense and put into those pages, so whatever you worked on for that, I think if you can take. A hold of that content and then send it to me so we can get it for the voters' guide, for the deliberative guide, I should say, and we'll probably be able to use most of the same information for deliberative as well.
Is it text only or text and?
We can use, we can use, we can, we can use photos, Carl, we have used photos in years past. We have, I I I'm confirming, can we use photos in years past? They're not going to be color photos?
No, 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 I get that, that's why I was, I I, that's why I was sort of in my, I mean, I'll take a swing at it.
Eh and I'm happy to support, I feel like I have been so in the weeds for so long that it might benefit everyone for some fresh. Perspective and voice, but I'm happy to, because I have, uh you know, a fountain of data and history to support it, but if you would want to take the lead, I would be happy to work with.
Yeah, I'll take a swing, I'm I'm, let me, you know, A, as somebody new to this, I've seen a ton of school projects in a ton of places, this is like literally one of the most reasonable. Like it's, it's overwhelmingly reasonable, right, it there's, it's all the right stuff.
Tagline, overwhelmingly reasonable.
No, like it really, like, like it really is, like, like, eh like, looking at the square footage, looking at like. To that point of what I've seen elsewhere in other towns, and frankly, some not not nearby, that that. I drove by a school the other day that I thought was a factory, and then I realized it was a school, um and I don't remember which one that is, but it's, it's one of the ones nearest, and I was like, oh. Like, I could see how a community could react somewhat negatively to a to a, to that type of design, or even one in my hometown of Methuen, that was like, like. What is, you know, the eight story lobby, you know, and and like, just just odd, there was no need for any of that, but but they knew they were going to get the money because it was, it was a different funding formula, so it didn't matter, right? Um I mean, that's like, this is overwhelmingly reasonable, like, it really, really is, and so like, to Jason's point of how do we get that point across of the positives of this? And so like to Jason's point of how do we get that point across of the positives of this? Like, so I'm gladly taking.
And I, and I will take on the default stuff for any Voters Guide and stuff, I'll just work on that with anything that I put together for that, so you drop your plate. Okay.
Yeah.
So as we, once we get that, Tim, I think that'll be the next step for us. We can then work on probably everybody just grabbing some copies of it and just hanging it around places in town in terms of the physical delivery of it. And I think our primary mechanisms for getting it out in the public will be social media and then will be the Voters Guide and Deliberate Guide.
Great, and are we good on the social media front with the change of name to that existing page? And harnessing that as the Wilkins School Project?
Yeah, I think.
I'm already an admin on there, so that's, it's not difficult, but I didn't want to touch it without consensus here.
So that would be the.
So there's the, there's the, there's the one that, that I already made the changes to.
Correct, the website, and that has already been.
URL, that's now the Wilkins Project. The second one is the Facebook and Instagram.
Right, just changing the name of the Facebook to Wilkins School Project.
Right, because that is non-existent, so, um, great. And then do we need to, um, so when we're empowering to do these different things with the social media shares? If we're just sharing, you know, information from the decks that we've already presented or something from the website that we've all already signed off on, that should be appropriate to do without needing to talk to each other about it and.
Correct.
And, okay, I just, I want to make sure that I'm staying within the guise of, of what is allowed and appropriate.
And, I'm sorry.
Good.
And in theory, anything that hasn't been can be routed through Tom, and Tom as the chair has the authority to say yes or no.
Super.
Okay.
I guess is how I would, like if all of a sudden there's a new question that comes up.
Right, and we want to respond, and like with that, yeah, 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 okay.
At least I would be perfectly comfortable, I think we can send that to Tom and as the chair, he's authorized on our behalf in between meetings to issue statements, so.
And I also think that if we're just essentially looking at that deliberative guide, breaking that into chunks of information, that's essentially what we're going to be sharing and it's already been shared in the public anyway, so it's just a new avenue with which we're sharing it.
Yep.
Great.
Okay. Any other comments on communication going forward? Shannon, do you want to touch on the last thing? I'm sorry.
Uh, the press release? No, I mean, just if, no, yeah, so this was just events, so, um, so I, you know, last year you guys did a whole slew of things. I don't know, I, I think those definitely yielded a lot of, of talk and engagement. I, we obviously don't have time for that. The PTA has already sent, um, they're having their annual budget meeting that they always have. So I think we need to decide who's going to that in February. They do that, so that's not just focused on this, that's, um, they'll invite the town as well, so that's to present your budget and all warrant articles. So I think a couple of us there might be a good idea. But then I wondered if we wanted to consider hosting maybe a minimum of two opportunities to tour or, you know, or to ask us questions. And then maybe even like two Zoom options, because that's pretty low, low commitment on our part. I mean, I'm happy to, to do a Zoom, I've done them before. Just again, to give the community an avenue to ask more questions about the project that we're asking them to, you know, make a big investment in. Um, and then I didn't know, you know, you guys did so many coffees last year, if there were any groups that you felt like you were compelled or had time to reach out to, to maybe go back and, and say like, we have, we've updated, we're making changes and we want to let you know, you were gracious enough to host us last year. Do you, you know, do you want to host us again? I didn't do any of that work, so I, I'm putting that out there to you all. And then information tables at any like upcoming school and town events, which I don't have listed. But if we can all agree that we want to do them, then, you know, I, we can get to work kind of scheduling as, as we're available.
Um, good, Jason.
Uh, just kind of feedback on those ideas, I, I like the hosting of thing, you know, maybe two or however many in, in person. And we could even host them at the school, the doing of the tours, we did the tours last year, so I know that I did, like I personally was at two of those touring events. One of them, I stood there the whole time, just me, it was a little bit of a lonely time with my thoughts. Um, and so like they just, those, the tours from the, at least the ones that I attended um, or quote unquote hosted, were not well attended, like not a lot of people came to those. The coffees was a bit of a heavy lift, I'm not sure if it moved people or didn't move people, but I'm happy to engage with that again, if that's what, what, what people want to do. I don't know that we necessarily had particular groups, we kind of like, it was like, anybody you want, you want us to come to your house, we'll come to your house.
Yeah.
I, I don't think we, we do that this year, I think.
Yes.
Yeah, I would agree, but.
Yeah, yeah, I was saying like, if people want us to do it, like I'm willing to do it, but I don't know that that's going to yield much for us. I think if we can attach ourselves to other events that are already happening, we'll get better traction.
Tim?
So like, by community events, you mean like if there's a home basketball game, we set up a.
Correct, correct, like kindergarten information night is coming up, right? But again, though, that does.
When we get those boards, we can stand there with our one pager.
Yes, but my concern with the school ones, those are easy, we know when those are, we have access. It doesn't do much to reach out to that, so, you know, segment of our community that, that doesn't have kids in the school. So, you know, that's where I'm lacking good ideas this time of year. Right, so that's where I'm like, well, if we off, at least if we offer something, we tried, right? So like, I don't, I'm, and I'm happy to do a little more research, like maybe there's some events coming up at the library. They're very, very collaborative there at the town library. So maybe there's something there that we can piggyback on to the point of partnering with something that's already happening.
So I have some thoughts. Um, I think that us hosting ourselves and just saying, hey, come see us walk around, much like you, I had spent some, some lonely times standing there. However, I know that PTA has some very good ideas of maybe making a fun event that then while the kids are having fun, the parents can walk through or grandparents and others. So that's one where I would like us to partner and see what they have in mind and then make it more of a community minded thing. Because then you're, you're not just coming, but then while you're there, we're also can answer your questions and walk you through if you haven't been through. So I think that would be more bang for our buck and our time. I do think we had a couple, I know Tom and I, you and I went to one last year over at, um, I never remember the name right, Summers?
Summerfield?
Yes.
Summerfield, and I think that was a pretty big group of our target demo that, and they asked some very good tough questions. And I think that maybe doing a couple of those where we have groups of those communities, you know, Lions Club, if they could fit us into their calendar. Rotary Club, a, a few where we can have groups of people where the onesie twosies of inviting me into your, into your living room, we don't have time. We don't have time, and while those were great for definitely meeting some new people, and we ended up, a lot of those were newer people in town wanting to get familiar. And so I think they were lovely and a wonderful opportunity to have great conversations. I don't think that right now we have the capacity to do that. So I think, um, trying to consolidate our efforts to a few of these key demographics that do like to have groups come in anyway, right, and do like to be informed. If somebody is able to like go to the Republican breakfast that happens once a month, you know, that kind of thing. I think that it goes with going to things that already happen or that could easily get pulled together and have a group of people where we can have more return on our investment of time. So those are the ones that I would suggest that we focus on and try to get some invites to in the next couple of weeks. And then we, we did have a presentation that we all used, and I think we should be consistent whatever we share. So whoever has the ability to go to one of those has a consistent message.
Yeah, I, I mean, suggest that, in my experience, having less events of higher quality with a farther reach and partnership with other organizations such as the PTA, such as existing meetings, I completely agree with you. So the, the bigger the reach, the, the less events, the, you know, the higher quality planned events typically can be beneficial. And worth, you know, the time and energy to put into it as, you know, the board. As I know, working with you is, is quite extended in, in, in what you do. So, um, but yeah, I think the PTA is, is coordinating a number of events and I think that would be beneficial.
So Tom, since I'm the liaison to that group, does it make sense then for me to just kind of, um, get with them and get some dates and then disperse them amongst, like, do you want me to send them to you first or can I just?
Well, I think we need to have a central database, I was going to ask Terry, do you think you'd be able to create that database of events? Basically just creating a list of the organizations we need to reach out to and then finding when their next meetings are and doing that outreach at that point? Do you have that bandwidth to do that? Just, I mean, did you mention some of those groups that I hadn't even thought of it as we were sitting here talking?
I, I can definitely do some of it, I, I just.
Not that you have to do all the events, but just a collecting point of the events and we can assign them out or take them all.
I, I can, I can definitely go back to and I, and I am fairly connected to things in town that I can pull together a list in the next week. My next week has some personal challenges going on, so if I cannot, I will.
I can help you with that, too.
But I, I can definitely brainstorm at the very least and reach out to a few very quickly and then we can go from there.
And I think anybody else that has groups that we, we should be reaching out to, if you want to send those directly to me and I can add them to, to Melissa and Terry create. So, and then we can look at dates and then I start having a volunteer pick up those assignments. Okay. Anything else on this piece?
Uh.
Jason?
Yeah, so I just, um, this is more of a materials question, so I know like last time we did these events, we, who is creating the, the boards? I know you're creating the, the one pager, but we also had the floor plan, like.
Yep, so that's panel.
Yeah, panelists, those are the montage boards.
Yeah, so they have that ready for us or once a.
I just got an email with an electronic version of that, so I need to figure out the next piece of it, which is getting some hard copies. But yeah, I'm not printing them, yeah. Right, I mean, that's for them to determine how they utilize that, but yeah, they may choose to do their own, you know, in for, yeah. To print the montage board, so that, previously they, they provided those, um, so, yeah.
All right, everybody comfortable with that at this point then? And obviously we have homework pieces for all of us to go through and, um, start working on.
We do, I'm just, so while we're still on the facility piece, um, and I said it before because I, I'm, I'm really excited with, with the numbers that came through. And I just wonder if, um, you know, if that material, that's a material change and I just wonder if we need to reconsider anything that we talked about with our vote at the last meeting, given that there's been a change materially to warrant Article twelve in terms of the, the financing. Like if we need to reconsider the motion that was on the floor last week.
Financing of it?
No, 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 because, no, not the financing, let me rephrase. Because there was such a material change to what this is now, what we're projecting for the cost to the taxpayer, if that changes anything for anybody.
Gee, Shannon, I wonder where you're going with this one. Uh, Tim, do you want to change your vote? Any, uh, so, so I.
And maybe not, I mean, and maybe not, maybe this is, maybe this is a, you can tell me this is not a conversation that, that's relevant, I, you know.
I'm, I'm, go ahead, Terry.
I, I just want to throw out, one more thing that came up after our meeting was a reminder that we actually were guided by our taxpayers to use the fees from, from the town to go and come back with being able to have the cost estimates be more granular and have the two options. And so we now have an answer to that question, right? And so I do feel like, again, it's timely that it's a response to what they've asked us to do. And so it is not exactly what we had last year. And, and I think that the timing of you asked us to do this and now we are giving this response and putting it on the ballot. I think that factoring that in is maybe something we just had not discussed.
Yeah, and so, so I've done a lot of thinking of this more than I'd like to admit over the last, what, week and a half since we talked about this. And it goes down to what you just said, Terry, I'm not concerned about, they, they gave us the funds to do this, they didn't say, there was no timeline on when we had to use those funds, whether we presented something now or whether we presented something next year. To me, that's a, an irrelevant matter, but I did go back and, and the more I thought about this, I feel like we as a board are assigned with putting something forward that we think is the right project. And Shannon, you had asked the question last week and, and I, I didn't gloss over it because I do think this is the right project. You know, whether the timing of it is, is the best is, is not something I think we have to worry about. So I think in that regard, I would reconsider my vote, um, because I do think that we've come up with a project. I do support the project, I think it's the right scale project. Obviously, the financing information from eighty-five to seventy-six million is a big difference. I think it's financed better than what we did last year. I just think there was some general apprehension when I, when I took that vote last week. And the more I thought about it, the more I think that I, I would like to reconsider that, so. Procedural to do that, we just, it's a reconsideration vote?
No, there's one policy.
I, I couldn't find the policy on, Tim?
Thank you, Tim.
And I should have asked you about this before, Tim, but. Oh, the reconsider. Yep, that we suspended and then we, we put it back into place.
I would like to make that motion.
Mike, Tim.
I'll second that motion.
B D.
B E D D A.
B D A. This is our Board Meeting Rules of Procedure and Order, reconsiderations are covered in Item fifteen of that. Measure the reconsideration requires a three-fifths supermajority to be approved.
Okay, so we have a motion and Tim has a second, so we'll call a vote on that. All in favor of suspending policy B E D D A for the reasons that Tim listed? All in favor, there are five, and none against. So now we've done that, Tim, the next step is to.
I would move to reconsider, uh, the board's, um, vote taken to move Article twelve to the ballot or to deliberative session.
And that is your motion?
That is my motion.
Okay, we have a second.
I'll second.
And as a policy, um, point, that has to be done by somebody that voted for it.
That's correct, who voted in favor and so, yes, that would, that I would be in favor and as would Shannon, so that would be a proper motion.
Okay, so with that, uh, so we reconsider it, Tim?
So we now vote on the, the motion to reconsider.
And then we have to vote on the motion again, okay, so three votes is what we'll have to do, technically four, because we'll reinstate B E D D A.
That's correct.
Ready today?
Got all of, I'll.
And that's alphabet.
No, it's later, I'm done, I'll, I'll, I'll give you the, the short version, but yeah, that's.
So, all right, so the next motion on Tim's motion to reconsider our decision to move, reconsider the vote to move the facilities project to the deliberative session. All in favor?
Aye.
Five. None opposed. Tim?
Nope, so you're good, so we are now at the point where we are now read, uh, moving Article twelve as a, uh, uh, whether or not we move that to deliberative session.
Yeah, I would like to make the motion to move Article twelve to the deliberative session. No, yeah, to the ballot, right, it's to the ballot, yeah. Oh, so, yeah, because that's the legislative body that moves it to the ballot, yes, I know this, okay, yeah, to deliberative session, please.
Second.
Okay, any further discussion on that piece? Okay, all in favor of moving Article twelve to the deliberative session? Five in favor, none opposed. One more, Tim?
I moved to, I, I moved to reinstate policy B E D D A.
I second that motion.
Okay, all in favor? Five, four, none opposed. Did you get all that today? Okay, thank you. Okay, so that. That will change, uh, that poll, that vote from four to one in favor to five to nothing in favor. And I appreciate the flexibility to be able to allow me to change that vote, um, after doing more thinking on it, so thank you for that and.
Can I just have, make one comment?
Yes, Amy.
So, thank you, um, so now I can officially get your, um, MS twenty-six, which is your budget, your default, which, um, through D R A and your warrant, I can get those finalized. Through D R A and your warrant, I can get those finalized.
We have to sign those, right?
Yeah. So that, that's why I'm bringing this up. So we sign things through Panda Docs. So I'm gonna be getting those, um, complete and sending those out to you. If you can be on the lookout, that would be great. I need to post all of these by January twenty-ninth. So it'll be wonderful to get one district done. The other two have to wait until budget committee's vote next week. So.
Okay.
So just be on the lookout in your email. Thank you.
Thank you.
You can do that. Thanks, Amy. Okay. Moving on now to, uh, preparation for the deliberative session. I think essentially this is going to come down to how we want to organize this presentation. Uh, we, the way that it's organized is Article 12 has to go first in the presentation. So Amy is. Essentially just copied over the public hearing deck. Uh, the one thing that is not in there, Shannon, is a, an extensive bond, uh, pro, bond project, uh, Wilkins project presentation. My thoughts initially are we take what we did in the public or in the bond hearing for that, move that to the front of the deliberative. I do think we need to give the full presentation that night. So if you and Terry want to go through those slides, fine tune anything that you want to exclude, maybe get in there the new piece about the financing where it's twenty-seven million lower than, than last year's. Um, and then any other edits, we could add that into the deck that Amy has shared. Uh, we can do that. For the rest of it, I think we're probably fairly. Good to go with the content we already had, um, unless anybody else has any further discussion on that. Um, and then I think if we want to continue the same presentation order for deliberative.
But the same way we did it at the other.
Exactly.
The budget, the default, the roll right through it.
Yeah, exactly. So it'll start off with the bond. I'll do the budget. You can do default and then Jason can take the CRFs.
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah, that's good for me. I, my only, um. Thought was, and, and, but now that's gonna be, I'm pretty long. I just wanted, so Terry and I worked together on the presentation and she was fantastic and, and brought so much to that presentation. And I just wondered though, for the deliberative. Um, if, if we wanted to keep volleying that back and forth or if it's easier for the listening audience, if it's just one. Person delivering.
From a speaker standpoint?
From a speaker stand.
My, my thought is actually the opposite. My thought, if there are multiple people, you're getting a change of voice in there, listening to one person for thirty-five minutes, I think is, is more difficult. It's easier to zone that out than having two people alternate. But I'm not one that's presenting that, so I don't want to volunteer somebody for something they are not ready to do or not capable of doing or have hesitancies on or not available to do.
Yeah, I, I would say, I certainly am happy to share again, but we can look at what that looks like to make a, a natural flow.
Sure.
And see where, where it might make sense.
Yep. Works for me.
And I, and I do like, I do like the thought because we, we do all own what we're putting out, that we all have an opportunity to make our voices heard, that we totally own this. So.
Yeah, no, I, I like that. No, a hundred percent.
Uh, and with that, in terms of, once we get the deadlines for the voting guide, I don't mind taking on all of the voting guide pieces in the deliberative guide for everything except for the bond article. If you want to send me that information, I can. Pair it down. Um, but I think if you already have it collected in slides, it may be easier to, to, to go through and, and just put it together, even if it's in a Word document, send it to me and then I'm happy to, to parse it out. But I want to make sure that we get. I don't know that we need to put the entire presentation into a voter's guide, but I want to make sure that you have a say in Shannon in terms of what should be included in there when we put it in the voters. Does that make sense? I don't mind doing all the other CRFs and everything for that.
Yeah, no, that's great. I guess I just want to be clear on what you're looking for when you said it's in slides. So, um.
Basically, basically last year, we had, I created a Word document and I, I think I did. Majority of the pieces, but Victoria did the facilities piece. I can share with you what we did last year.
Yep.
So basically trends, um. Word. Translate, translating the presentation into a Word format. So I will share with you what we did last year. If you don't mind tackling that piece, I can do the rest of the content. So nobody else has to worry about that. That's easy enough to, to touch upon those.
Got it.
Tim?
Um, just, uh, so I'm not telling you to do it. I'll gladly take a shot at it. Um, but in terms of, since this is the one that's gonna go up on the screen and people are gonna read it, right? So, um, I know that we all want to keep something on one slide, but if that turns the text into size twelve, like there should, you should never have anything on a slide lo, lower than slide eighteen, low, slow, sorry, smaller than an eighteen font. Um, that's the, literally nothing ever on a slide smaller than eighteen font. And if you're gonna do one that's a pitcher, so like when we put up the floor plan stuff, like literally, that should just be the slide, even if you lose your formatting around the edges. Like just for, from a visual presentation to an audience like that, especially if people are on Zoom, because then their screen gets even smaller. You need to maximize that when you're presenting, uh, in a hybrid environment. And so, uh, that's just some. Comments from, from my world of, of how we do that is. So like some of these, even though for those of us that sit on a computer screen, that, that slide may look okay. The minute you put that up on that screen and people are trying to read it and follow along on Zoom, suddenly that slide, i, i, even though you're gonna potentially double the size of your deck. You're not doubling the information you're sharing. You're just making it easier to follow. So I would encourage us to sort of consider utilizing all of the space that's available on it by, by making that stuff a little bit bigger and easier to, to read and follow. That, that's all.
Yep.
Okay.
Right? So.
And.
Yeah.
From my recollection, we can control the slide, so I, I'm happy to use my computer for that if we need to. We can control that. So if, while we're talking for the facilities piece, um, in particular, if, you know, whoever's toggling can. Shannon's talking about slide sixteen and seventeen, you know, Terry's maybe navigating from sixteen to seventeen as she goes through those points. So we can, we can figure that out. I, I'm happy to, to run the slides as well, but. We, we can make that, my whole point is we can make it work presentation wise, because we'll actually use one of our computers for the slide deck itself and not have to rely on Steve or anything for it.
Steve very graciously used his computer for me at the bond hearing. My kids like to send me text messages and they pop up on my screen during meetings. Um, I have a question. So are we first on the fifth? Are we the first board to go? Are we doubling or we're the only? We're the only, right? This is the.
Yeah, because it's, we have two hour windows slotted.
So I just wonder, can we, um, get there a little early as a group to go over some of the mechanics of it? Is, is that, I mean, I know it's like everybody's already having a long day, but, um. Yep. I'll be there at five, but I'm not suggesting that like S A U staff need to be there at five, but just like for us as a board, I just, like, the mechanics, when, when you start getting clunky with them, like that's our, that's not a good thing. So I, I just. But again, this is my first deliberative. You guys have all done this, so, um, I'll be there early if, if anyone wants to join me.
When I can at least go, that'll be the most, um, needing the most synchronization is going through that slide deck and just getting it set up and being able to navigate through that. Everybody else can get there when they're, when they're comfortable, but I think if, um, two of us can go through that, probably two of us should go through that because it's not a meeting at that point. Um, and we can just make sure that we're prepped for, make sure everything's working technically.
Thank you.
Uh, you all have the deck, right?
Yes, we, uh, yeah, uh, I'm sorry, I, I have the deck. Can everybody else get that as well?
The one you just sent?
Yeah.
Yep.
And I did put in the moderator information. Um, and so I think we do need to set up a meeting. Typically, the chair, the moderator and the superintendent.
Yep.
I need to go over the, um, the night as well.
Okay. All right. Anything else you needed to touch upon for deliberative, Mike or Amy?
Not at this time.
Okay. Um, anything else from the board on deliberative? I think we're all good with that. Shannon, I will send you what we did last year. It was, it was basically our introduction letter to the voting guide and we used the same piece for deliberative because I only have one.
Great.
Uh, edition of my notes, so I will send that to you.
Super. Thank you.
So you have that to be able to review. Okay. Uh, moving on to our next item is Steve's baby buying a van, Steve.
We, uh, we talked about this a while ago, um, and, and, uh, we talked about moving into January just to see where we were. Uh, we did confirm, um, that we can order a van for delivery. Um, after, you know, we're using, uh, um, the unreserved fines on the fund balance and there is no fee to cancel. What this allows us to do is to order a van and have it, if, if everything works out, availability in August. For the beginning of, we write, we talked about this for volleyball and, and, and using it for other savings. Um, so what, just looking for, just to make sure the board was still okay with putting the order in. If, um. In May, we, depending on, right, fund balance, all the funds, if we have to cancel, we can cancel.
Okay.
We'll work with Roger to put it in with that delivery, but making sure we have a window to cancel.
Do you need a vote from us tonight?
I think consent of the board is fine.
Yeah. Any questions received? Any objections to them moving forward in this plan? Okay. Uh, all right, Tim. Now you can do your policy in terms of the volunteers, both.
No, will that let me broadcast if I plug it into mine?
Yeah, and then, uh, if you want to, for the, I forget to join the Zoom if you want to, uh.
Nevermind. All right. So I'll just talk you through it instead. All right. So, 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 so there's, there's different policies, um, uh, in play. This is subject to volunteers. So this is policy I J O C. Uh, the Amherst School Board, uh, uh, in, let me get the date wrong. Hold on. Yep, these are all. Yep. So in twenty twenty, the Amherst Board, um, contracted with someone, I'm not sure who, to develop this policy, right? Okay, so Safe Harbor. So, uh, and it describes the difference between volunteers and what are called designated volunteers, right? So, uh, designated volunteers are people that have spent one-on-one time with, uh, students. That are recurring individuals. So designated indi, designated volunteers are not, uh, there's a class party this week. I'm coming here to help with that. Um, they are not, um, those, those sort of one-off, uh, individuals. So, um, one-time cafeteria assistants, if there's a book fair and somebody shows up to help at the book fair. Um, those sort of one-time or what we would call limited assignments, right? That's a, that's a volunteer. The designated volunteers are your, uh, overnight chaperones are the people that come in on a recurring nature. And that's the, that's the difference largely, um, in designated volunteers and volunteers. Designated volunteers have to go through the criminal background check, have to get fingerprinted, have to go through, um, all of those procedures versus, uh, just a volunteer or a guest, a random guest to present on something to the kids or something like that. Don't, don't have to do that. And so, um, the Amherst Board policy is, um, a bit more substantive. Um, and then the Mount Vernon or, uh, South Heagan one. And so they, um, definitely need to do some work. Um, for a variety of reasons that I won't get into, uh, because those are their policies, but we had a good discussion about that, uh, just as a, um, like there's probably needs to be some language in the South Heagan one about senior projects. For example, and we've already, you know, talked to the administration about the fact that there probably needs to be some type of language in there because those individuals are having that recurring thing. The outside people are potentially meeting with students, right? So there's, there's some nuances there that, that we won't have, um, um, but that they're looking at. And then there's the New Hamp, the. New Hampshire School Board Administration has, uh, their version, which adds references to like the Fair Labor Standards Act and that you're a volunteer and you're not an employee. And it, it just adds a lot of that other stuff that. I don't know that there's a, a value to, to adding that to, um, our existing policy. Um, the one difference between that one and ours. That, um, you know, y, you can all decide on or not, is they have a specific paragraph on coaches that explains that coaches are treated as designated volunteers. Versus our current policy, which simply says, including coaches, assistant coaches and so on. So it's purely a, uh, uh, do we want to, do we, do we think it's important enough to call that out? And I, I'm new here, so I, I don't know whether that's been an issue with, uh, assistant coaches specifically. They're like, oh, sure, I'll, I'll help you coach. Um, they're now, under our policy, that's gonna be a designated volunteer. And I, I don't know how that's played out here, um, in the past.
So, so my question is if, if we have it listed as they're one of the, this type of, you know, designated volunteers or such and such, such and, coaches, such and such. Is there any subs, substantive text that the N H S B A recommends that, you know, that's not covered by our generic over broad statement?
No, because then they make some other reference to N H I A and stuff like, like it's not a.
Doesn't apply to us anyway.
It's, it's not a, I don't think, uh, my, so my advice to, to this board is I think our policy as written is just fine. I don't know that I would make any to the, to the, um, Amherst one, but.
And I think an important point to also note is that when the Amherst School Board, uh, developed this policy in twenty twenty, they did pay Safe Harborers to come in and craft this, you know, very intentionally for, for this district. So that was another reason that the policy committee felt. It important to bring this specifically as a board to our board, because if we're going to change it, you know, we're, we're talking about undoing work that the district, that this district paid to have.
Yeah, and I think that's fine if there's a substantive change to what N H S B A recommends. But if there's no, I mean, to me, it doesn't seem if there's no change, just change it just to change it and match what they have seems silly. If we're just rearranging the words to cover the same thing.
The only thing that our, that the Amherst policy doesn't have, which it, it really, any good policy should, is the list of references at the end. But I don't, that doesn't require us to change the policy. That's just adding those as an addendum. You know, would be my suggestion is that we do add. The references so people can go find it in the RSA. They can go to the ed rules if they want to know where this policy comes from. Um, is to add the references at the end, but I wouldn't make, I, I would suggest this board not make any changes to the, to that policy.
Anybody else?
And, and again, I think the South Heagan one's gonna have to be. You, I think there's a situation where although it'd be ideal if they all match, I don't think they can, because I think South Heagans is gonna have to be different. All of this still eventually ends up at the administration and the principals anyway on managing the lists and stuff like that. So the policies and procedures they put place are, are gonna cover the whole S A U, but. I think the language in the Amherst ones is sufficient.
Yeah, so I just have a question. I mean, I remember very distinctly going over this and hardening this policy. Where we said, listen, we want to make sure that at the very least, people who could have. The possibility of being alone with kids have gone through, you know, bare minimum of, of this. And so. We didn't want to make it a barrier to somebody who's dropping off cookies for a party as, or reading a story while the teacher is there as opposed to. Being someone that is, that is seeing kids over and over and building those relationships, which are normally healthy and good. However, you want to make sure that you have the right people doing that. So, um, I feel like we put a lot of thought and time into this. Um, and I just was a little bit unclear as you were going through it. Do we call out assistant coaches or not? Because if we don't, then adding just that one designator into. That paragraph would seem prudent. If that's the only difference.
It says those include, but not limited to coaches, assistant coaches, volunteer assistants for extracurricular activities, recurring classroom volunteers. It's that whole theme about recurring.
Okay.
The one-offs are volunteers.
I mean, even lunch, we, we, we said, hey, if you're, if you're coming.
So if I came in.
Once because it was an emergency.
If I came in once because they needed help, hey, can you come in on Thursday and help us at lunch? And I said, sure.
But if you come every Thursday, then you're.
The minute it becomes recurring, the way this polit, that's when it, or that's when you cross from volunteer to designated.
Okay.
And as far as I know, to your point, Terry, was, this is especially critical for folks that may have one-on-one time with kids, whether it was guiding a kid to the bathroom during lunch or if it was a more. Um, you know, th, they're helping out with a, an I P or whatever it might have been. So, and I think we had even said at the time that if we had to have somebody in that was a one-off volunteer for lunch duty, we would make sure that. Even more particularly, they would not be assigned to take a kid to the bathroom or something. It was gonna be the strict, in, in the designated volunteers are known, they're in there all the time. So they were the ones that were going to take the lead on an activity like that, where if a kid is coming from recess or something, it was gonna be. A designated volunteer that did that and not Tim on his one-time fill-in for, um, for somebody else. So we had kind of made that clear when we set this up, that that was the intent of it as well. And again, you could put a thousand different sentences in here to, to outline every situation and you're still not gonna cover everything.
So like, for example, I don't think, and I, I just reread it again and I didn't see it. Like, I don't think it actually calls out overnight field trips. For example, but the administration knew enough to make sure that when I, before I went to Battleship Cove with all those kids, that I, you know, got fingerprinted and went through the system. So. Um, they clearly have that figured out in terms of what that, of what that line is, but technically that's not.
It is, correct. That's not in there now.
So yeah, I, I guess that's, that's my only question. I think that we did spend considerable time and thought on this. I feel like it's a good policy. And so that was my only question is did we have any lax that we can think of?
Like I said, the only one that isn't technically in here, uh, is overnight field trips. But I know that they have the procedures in place because I went through them. So I don't know that you need it in here.
Do we have a separate procedure for that?
Is maybe there's a field trip one I didn't read. I don't know. I'm just, no, I'm just saying like, when they put out the request, they were like, and if you want to go, you have to go get fingerprinted and do the background check. So they knew enough. So they knew enough to do it.
Yeah, I mean, I wouldn't mind codifying that if it's not currently there and we don't have it in a separate one.
But, and I don't remember seeing that, just, that would also not be in, I don't think it was in the, the NHSBA doesn't cover that. And I'm.
Let me ask you a question, if I interrupt you for one second, Tim. From a administration standpoint, Mike, does this policy not give you the guidance that you need? I mean, or does it, are you, obviously the overnight field trip's not in there, but you know.
Yeah, yeah, we're, we're all right, you know, with this, this, we have, we have plenty of room to implement the policy.
And I think these are the minimum standards too. This is not where these are the only instances this can be applied. We could, we could in theory have every volunteer sign up for this, but we're just mandating designated volunteers have to, but we could go a step beyond that and say, we want every volunteer. You can do that, I should say.
The statute says you have to have a, the statute essentially says have a policy and implement.
Yeah, and I think, I mean, I think I'm reading through the policy again, and this, it states a volunteer should not be considered a volunteer, a designated volunteer, and that shall not be permitted to work alone with students unless they have method criteria for a designated volunteer. And then below it says, you know, it lists the criteria, which says include but not, but are not limited to, right? So it lists a whole slew of volunteer roles, but it doesn't limit you to those roles. So in your example of the overnight, it's covered clearly procedure, that's what's happening procedurally. So I, I think this covers, I think this really came to policy because there was some issue, not issue, that may be the wrong turn of word, but there were just some misunderstandings with how, how the policy was being operationalized, but I feel like that's, everything you need to clear that up is here, I think.
Well, I think the concerns, the concerns were in the other district, not the Amherst policy. There's the, the Mont Vernon policy and the South Heagan policy need to be, in my opinion. I, I think are the ones that need to potentially.
I think, well, I think there was some, some questions in Amherst.
Like, it was, it was, remember the room parent?
Right.
Right, right.
And this helped, we are clearing up some senior project stuff.
Right, right.
And to be completely honest, the area that we have to grow, and Christine and I have already talked about this, is volunteer training.
Yep.
Oh, right.
That's the area that we have talked, we have already begun our.
But that doesn't need to be in the policy.
No, no.
The, the training part.
Yeah, I know, but I'm just saying that's where it started and I think it was a good conversation to have and in having that conversation, the, the policy is solid. And it's really just some, some other things kind of came to light that you all.
The Amherst policy is a little broader in encompassing those designated volunteers. And I know there was probably also some confusion with the policy around class parties. So if you know you're going to attend all three class parties throughout the year, there was a thought that that room parent had to be background checked. So that because Amherst is a little broader and covers a little bit more than Mont Vernon and South Heagan, you know, we wanted just a little bit of clarity on that. So I think we cleared that up during policy committee, so I think we're in good shape.
All right, any other comments regarding that policy? Does anybody want to make a motion to change the policy to include anything else in there? Are we sufficient with the administration's execution of this, using these as minimum standards?
No, I mean, the policy itself, I think is fine, but I do think it might be prudent to take Tim's suggestion and add the references. Do we need a motion for that, Tim, or is that something you feel that policy committee, yep?
It's really just directing the administration to add the appropriate references to the bottom of the existing policy, we're not updating the policy. You could put the date that we reviewed it, in theory you could put reviewed, which is one of the things we used to do, if we brought it up at a meeting, we would put the, the discussion date essentially and say, we reviewed it on January 18th. And then you could just add the references under that. I think that's, you're not changing the policy, you don't have to re-adopt it. That would be my suggestion.
Okay. Great, thank you, Tim. That takes us to, about to close the business here, actually, as I look at things. So with that, I will open it up for our second public comment of the night. We have a couple of folks in person, if you'd like to speak, Terry, do you mind giving up your mic to that table there? If you'd like to speak, you'll have three minutes, come to the table, say your name and town or residence. For our folks that may be listening online tonight, I don't have the Zoom window pulled up, Steve, so I'll rely on your guidance for anybody that wants to raise their hand, but if you are online, raise your hand, turn on your app, or your camera, have your full name and your avatar, and then we'll get to you after we do the in-person public comment first. So, so you have, is that mic on? Yep, it's on, so you have three minutes after you say your name and town or residence, please.
All right, thank you, I'm Drew Ramo, I'm from Amherst. So thank you for letting me speak here. I want to start off by saying I am thankful for the work that the board has done on the Wilkins Project and as well the Ways and Means Committee, the hard work that's gone into that. It's very apparent and I appreciate that the, that you're trying to be responsive, learning from past, past attempts. So I want to start by saying that I support the Warren article, I know you already voted for it, but I'm, I'm in support of it. I appreciate that this time around, you are, you have a strategy for how you're going to engage with voters and that, that includes social media. And I, I hope that you can find ways to not, not only have voters come to you, but that you can go to them and, like, I know you talked about going to groups, but find, like, go in, go in finding who recently moved to town, knocking on their doors, expanding the voter base, like, doing that to increase the turnout. When we're talking about small turnouts and, you know, few voters can make a big difference, so I, I just want to encourage that. And then when it comes to, you know, the one pager, you spent a lot of time talking about, I think that's a huge, huge thing. And I, like, I, I just changed my, my cell phone bill, my cell phone plan, and when I did that, you know, I got a side-by-side comparison of what my old plan was and what my new plan was. I really hope that you can do something side-by-side, like, you know, here's what you voted against, here's the do-nothing approach, and, and here's, here's our new plan, something simple, digestible, and it makes it really clear to voters. So thank you very much, that's all, thank you.
Thank you, Aaron. Yep, thank you, see, we have somebody online, so what's the person's name? Caitlin.
Nope.
Oh, I'm sorry, Pete, go ahead, no, you're, we said in person first, Pete, go ahead. When you're ready.
Pete Maresco in Amherst, I, I just wanted to add a couple of things that popped into my head as, as you were talking. In terms of the one pager and the information you're going to use, I didn't hear anybody mention the student population estimate that was in there, but I think that might be important to add, because I know there was, I forget the number, but there was going to be some growth over the next 10 years. The other thing that, that popped into my head was that when you were talking about $33 million or so for the repair approach, you might have to take into account inflation on that, because if you do that approach, it's not going to all happen at once, it's going to happen over time. And we know by everything we've seen, you wait, you wait even a year, the price is going to skyrocket. So you might have to be careful how you use that number, because it might be more than the 33 million we have now. And the, the other thing that popped into my head was that in terms of reaching out to communities, I don't know how you get all the names, but I know like where I live, there's homeowners association. You get the, the one guy that's the president of the homeowners association, he reaches out, our group, it's 60 homes. I know a few people that live in like a 55-plus community, they have monthly meetings to go with the community. That might be a good place to, you know, make a presentation, so. I'll ask people I know and see when the next meeting is and let you know if you want to do that, anyway. I wrote that down, because if I waited till I got home, I'd forget all. I'm done.
Thank you. All right, so Steve, if you can move Caitlin into the, what's it called? Thank panelists, I was thinking presenter, but that wasn't right. If you can move Caitlin into the panelist, Steve will give me the go-ahead when you're all set, Caitlin, if you want to turn your camera on and get your avatar ready in the time being.
There we go, I am parked, I'm not driving, I'm just, I'm in a dark spot, so I'm doing what I can here, I'm Caitlin Thompson. Can you all hear me okay?
Yes, we can, thank you.
Okay, perfect. So I just wanted to provide a couple thoughts as I was listening. I think it's fantastic, the approach that you're taking on the, not only the one pager for the Wilkins Project, but the just overall sentiment of, let's focus on the positive. How is this impacting both the, the children who will be attending in their, their learning environment, but also the community? I think that's a great approach to this project as a whole. And I'm, I'm hopeful that with that kind of change in approach or change in focus, that will really help with the vote in March. One of the other items, I think Shannon, you had commented on archiving a previous website, I don't know if you were referring to JFAC or not, and the reference to the FAQs. I would just caution to remember what an FAQ is, it's a frequently asked question, and I remember the old JFAC site, it felt like it was all asked questions. So just keeping that in mind as you maybe refresh or refine your focus on that website. And then in terms of outreach, just to piggyback on Pete's comments, I think there's a lot of neighborhood, you know, either listserv in terms of emails to get out information, whether there is a formal homeowners community or homeowners association or not. And then also thinking about, it sounds like there was a mention of the Republican Party Committee, there's also the Democratic Party Committee, I don't know the frequency of their meetings, but thinking about the board's outreach in terms of a roadshow and just creating some enthusiasm on, you know, hey, we're on a roadshow here to garner interest, we're meeting with various community groups, you know, we'd love to have you join us. So that's all, just wanted to give some input, thank you.
Thank you, Caitlin. Anybody else, Steve? Okay, Caitlin, I, as Caitlin is still listening in, I do want to just thank her, not as a, for her public comment, it's fine, but also she was the chair, she was one of the leaders of the Ways and Means Committee, so thanking her as well. I know she's on in-person tonight, but did want to get that out there, that she was part of that group of seven that cast their votes and spent a lot of time looking at budgets and projects over the course of the last couple of months, so. With that, seeing no more, no further public comment in person, we do not have a need for a non-meeting or a non-public tonight, so with that, I will take a motion to adjourn.
So move.
I have one from Tim, second. Terry with a second, all in favor? Aye, five in favor, nobody opposed, we will adjourn tonight at 7:33 tonight. And our deliberative session is February 5th from 6 to 8 PM at South Heagan High School.